Yeah, we are back. We are back again on a Sunday evening podcast, Knowledge is Power Podcast, live. And tonight, we've got a good guest with us this evening. And we'll get with them later. Wait just a second. I got my girl here, LaDonna Sherwood. Hey, Donna, how's everything going?
It's going good. I'm super excited.
Yeah, you're always super excited. You know, we, we just had a good week this week. And tell me what's going on in the city?
Let me give you a brief update of a bunch of things that are happening around the city. Of course, we are getting ready for our elections, which early voting is going to be happening from October the 13th to October the 30th. Election day is November 3rd. But more importantly than that, we are wrapping up our census. And so we have until September the 30th on census, I believe, which is in just a couple of days. So if you haven't completed your census, the census is a really big huge deal. And it helps us allocate funds to different areas that we're needing around the city in our community. And those dollar signs are attached to every person that has been counted. So we want to make sure that people are filling out their census. But right now, at the Jefferson County Democratic Party Headquarters, we are looking for poll workers. They are two-hour shifts. If you want to volunteer at the local Democratic Headquarters, you can call 409-212-3366. The Jefferson County Democratic Headquarters is located at 2211 Calder in Beaumont, Texas. They have free local candidate signs. If you want to put a local candidate sign in your yard, you can go to, again, the local Democratic Headquarters and get free candidate signs. The Joe Biden and Kamala Harris signs will not be in until after October the 7th. So right now, we have Biden signs, but they don't reflect the Biden-Harris ticket. They just have Joe Biden on there. But we'll get the new signs after October the 7th. That's one thing. The last day to register to vote is October 5th. You can register to vote at the Democratic Headquarters. The Democratic Headquarters is open Monday through Friday from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. If you go to the Democratic Headquarters, and there's not a voter registrar there, you can register to vote at Carolyn Gidry's office, which is downtown in the courthouse. Okay. The Democratic Headquarters is also offering buttons. So of course, we're trying to generate income. And we want people to wear, you know, show their pride and support. You can purchase a button for $2. There are 12 different types of buttons. And people are considering this as historic election because it's the first African-American female vice president on the ticket. They have buttons with their, both of their pictures on it, which is a really big huge deal. They are $2 a button. Also, we on this ballot, they have sample ballots that you can take with you into the voting booth. We have filled out the ballot completely. You can take this ballot with you. There is no party voting. So you have to vote straight ticket to me, meaning you have to select each candidate. We have selected the Democratic candidates. You can bring this paper into the voting booth with you. This is not against the rules. These papers can be picked up. I'm going to be taking pictures of this, posting this on my page. But just to let everybody know that the Democrats are number two in each ballot, on each section of the ballot. We are number two. We are the second person. And it says "them" out to the side of the person's name. Now, one thing that I want to get clear is Mary is a write-in. Mary is our write-in candidate for Commissioner Precinct One. Because Mary is the write-in candidate, you will have to scroll the little dial to her name. And it will show up as Mary when you get ready to vote. But far as they go, we have a lot of new things happening. We are volunteering to work the polls. We are volunteering to hand out these ballot sheets. We are door knocking and just hanging the, uh, door knocking signs that say Biden-Harris. That is also giving you our local candidates. They have their pictures on this. We're putting this out in the community so that people can know who we are voting for. This is a really big huge deal. And we are super excited about getting geared up to, you know, get out the vote. We want everybody in the polls at the location. And early voting matters. October the 13th through the 30th, I want you out there.
Great, girl. You did a good job doing the hustling, the hustling part. We're going to vote like we never voted before in our life. We got to vote. And oh, by the way, the new news is that on Friday, the jurors reject the ballot. So now there's going to be a straight ticket. Now, we just vote one time and just, uh, we're going to vote blue one time and then move on out and move on out.
Super excited about that too.
Yes. Well, free people, Knowledge is Power Podcast Live is a platform to share important information by educating the southeast Texas African-American communities with viable info on health, education, local politics, business, and personal finances. Knowledge is Power Podcast can be located and you can find and subscribe to us on YouTube, at Knowledge is Power Podcast Live. You can, you can watch all our shows on it. If you miss it, at any time, you can go to YouTube. And you can hit the red buttons and subscribe to us, okay? And we're also on Facebook, Facebook Live, LinkedIn. And hopefully, in about 30 days, we're going to be on Instagram. So guys, we're moving on, moving on up. Okay. Listen, also, we've got to, speaking of voting, again, I've got to repeat this. Mondays through Saturdays, LaDonna, the Jefferson County Democratic Headquarters would be open from 2:00 to 6:00. Yes, it's Saturday. And you can get buttons, yard signs, the 2020 sensors, and the voters registration is also done there. And again, like LaDonna says, we need volunteers, volunteers. All right, it's time for me to bring our guest on tonight. And it's going to be from the city of Port Arthur, Texas. That is actually correct. We've got guests here tonight that's coming live with us from Port Arthur, Texas. And I'm going to start with ladies first. I'm going to go to the right and left bottom of the screen. Ms. Ingrid West Holmes. She's running in District One. Am I correct? Yes, right. That is correct. And I've been hearing the feedback. Is someone, a mic up to live on? I hear feedback. Where is that coming from?
Or maybe they have another device that's running at the same time.
Maybe so. Okay. And I've got my, uh, my good friend Kenneth Marks. He's running in District Four. The District Four candidate in the city of Port Arthur, uh, election, City Council election. And District Eight, Donna Ray Frank. Hello, fellas. I mean, young lady.
Hello. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening.
Glad to have you here. And, uh, I don't know, I still keep hearing the feedback. I guess.
I think that, uh...
Maybe, maybe it's mine. Let's see here. Let's see that.
No, I think that maybe, uh, I can't see the names. Is that maybe Mr. Frank?
I'm here. I only have one device on. I don't know.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't, I thought you were the other.
Okay, you're talking about Kenneth Marks.
Kenneth Marks. I think maybe that's yours.
Yeah, I think, turn your, turn your mic down just a little bit. Okay. Yeah, I got it. I got it. I got it. I got it. Port Arthur Pride! I'm proud. I got my Port Arthur Pride group here. And I'm not going to go back and let people know their, how, where we come from, but I know where you come from. So I was with you guys back here today. And we, we, and I knew you guys was going to be successful in whatever you do. And, and, and my, my, it's a pleasure to have you on because I am supporting you all. And this is what Knowledge is Power Podcast is, is a platform to promote our people in the African-American community in Jefferson County. And I'm going to start here with Mrs. Holmes, Ingrid West Holmes. And would you please, uh, just, I'd like to, like to the, the audience to know your background, where you come from, and give us a little bit of that with you.
Certainly. I'm Ingrid West Holmes. I am a 48-year graduate of District One in Port Arthur, Texas. I am a proud graduate of Lincoln High School and Lamar University. I, um, have worked in local government for 30, I had worked, I retired several years ago in local government for 31 years. I served as the Director of Health for the city of Beaumont. So that is my background as the Director of Health. I, I worked with a number of groups in the city of Beaumont. I currently work with the Gift of Life, which is a program that services the Southern County area that helps medically underserved people receive, uh, breast exams and mammograms, and also men free prostate cancer screening programs. So I understand programs, understand program development. I have worked in creating and implementing budgets. I have, as part of my background in, uh, public health, I understand ordinance, how they, I understand local government.
The way, you know, you, you, you have had background in the local government, but that, tell me, what, 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 what made you decide that this is what I, I like to run for? What, what is the difference that you're going to make in, as a City Councilman for the city of Port Arthur?
You know, the thing that matters, that the city of Port Arthur matters to me. When I retired several years ago, I gave back and I volunteered and did some things. And I felt like, and I still feel like, my volunteerism, the knowledge that I have in local government makes me a good candidate. The people of Port Arthur deserve the opportunity to understand. I'm a, I believe that Port Arthur has a lot of things that can happen in our community. I have been a lot of things. And as a visionary, I see some things that Port Arthur can do. I see that it deserves to have someone who understands who has worked, who understands, uh, bond issues. So I understand economic development. I see where in the community, there have been a number of housing, uh, projects that the city, uh, or I'm sorry, that the EDC has worked with in creating. I look forward in doing that again. I want to see what Arthur become the support of it. We have been with the, that's created and developed. One of the major issues and concerns that Port Arthurans have talked about was street repair and drainage repair, repair. Our current city council has done a bond issue to do that. I want to be a part of moving that forward. But most of all, I want to create some areas and plans in our community to make people want to be part of Port Arthur. And to, you know, for so many years, there's nothing to do in Port Arthur. Well, let's create with everybody in this community, something to do with Port Arthur. If we can create an entertainment district, if we, just a small entertainment district that people can come and enjoy. We have families here with their children, and they want to have something to do and create for their children. And I think that we need to help the community. Change from one, uh, a very, uh, district, work with huge components of District One and talk to them about their needs. I want to be involved with the people of the community. One of the things I know about the local government, about city council, we represent the people. We represent the needs and the needs of the people. And I, because of my background, because of my experience, I can do that. I can represent what the people need in an understandable method and way. I want to also make sure that we work collaboratively with other areas in our community. And I don't mean other cities necessarily, but even within our own city. I think we need to work with the county commissioners. I think we need to work with the Port Commission, with PAISD. We need to ensure that we have collaborative efforts in making Port Arthur work. I want to work with the, the here. And I want their voices to be heard. I want people to understand what they want in this community, what needs to happen in this community. And I want everyone to, to work together to make that happen. I think, you know, one of the things that I see, we have a number of parks in our community. As we are looking at creating environments and establishments here, let's create parks for our people. Let's, you know, one of the things about our culture, we have a very diversified culture in our community. Let's capitalize on that. Let's have, uh, various restaurants. Let's create fun things for people to be here. Jobs. Jobs are, let's have a community that offers diversification in jobs. We talk frequently about working with the refineries. Let's work with them, but sit down at the table and identify what it is, how do people in Port Arthur get jobs? But beyond that, once they get the job, let's do something as a community to keep those people here. And refineries are not the only places that offer jobs in Port Arthur, Texas. I think we should diversify our economy. We have a group of young people that I have seen, worked with, identified in this community, who want to be entrepreneurs. And they're doing a good job for us, a small community. Let's build on those small community ideas and thoughts. Work with people. Have local, uh, businesses here. One of the issues in my district, I represent the west side of Port Arthur if I'm elected. And one of the things they talk about is a grocery store. Well, we may not be able to build our partner with HEB. We may not have large grocery stores over there. But why don't we go back to what we've seen in the past? Small mom and pop grocery stores. Let's do some co-op grocery stores. But we need to build Port Arthur to what it can be. Port Arthur is a great city. It's a great city. And we need to make sure that we recognize that it is.
I have a question. So what it sounds like is that you're talking about a bunch of community engagement. How do you anticipate getting the community involved and the entrepreneurs and the business owners? And what is your proposal to, you know, garner this community engagement and feedback for all these things that you propose? How, how do you plan on getting the community involved?
Well, the first thing I want to do, COVID has really made a difference. But certainly, this venue of, of having Zoom calls, I want to identify people who are interested in that kind of thing in our community. People who want to have small businesses, who want to create possibly a co-op on the west side. There are several people that I have met with and talked about. I want to meet with people in every component of District One. And I have presented that information to several people. I, you know, as I indicated, District One is a diverse community. I want to look at the people who are identified as leaders in those communities, bring them together, and talk about how we can create a plan. One thing that I recognize, I'm one person and one vote. But I want to have a strong strategic plan that I can present to other city council members if I'm elected that will create that kind of environment in Port Arthur. I recognize where Port Arthur has been, and I recognize where it can be.
Awesome. That's, that's, Ingrid, that is, that is awesome. And I truly believe that it can be done. It can be done anywhere. And people, District One in Port Arthur, Texas, District One, Ingrid West Holmes, your candidate there, who's running. And that, you have really, uh, had all some good points. It's a good point.
I have one question, Tony, before we switch to another candidate. Tell us, what is District One? What area do you actually cover? Give us a breakdown so we can kind of know. You said the west side, but what is, what does that encompass?
Oh, thank you so much for asking. Uh, the, the District One not only encompasses the west side, but it encompasses Sabine Pass, also from Thomas Boulevard to Proctor. And I can describe it very vividly because I've driven it several times. And it goes up to, um, Blue Bonnet. It encompasses part of Memorial. One of the most interesting things about District One, District Four, and District Two, some of our districts cross over. So it's important, um, that people recognize in Port Arthur, you may be in this, in a district, but you, your precinct may be split. It may be A or B, and you may be voting for different candidates. I encourage people to understand who those people are that represent you. The second thing that I, may I just add one additional thing? We will be having two separate ballots in Port Arthur. You will have a ballot for, uh, the city of Port Arthur election and a separate ballot for the, all of the other elected officials. So it's very important that we remain diligent to stay in line and vote in both lines.
So you're saying it's going to be two ballots, one for the President's, uh, in the Texas, uh, the state.
County.
Right. And then you're going to have another ballot for this, just for the city of Port Arthur, correct?
That's for the city of Port Arthur City Council.
And so that means you could, you could stay in line one time, or you got to come, get out that line and go to another line?
It's my understanding there will be two lines. And the gentleman who are joining me can correct that. But I think we're going to have two lines. One will be for all of the, uh, national, low, other local municipal city of Port Arthur will have its own separate table and engagement for election.
Correct.
So if you've received a ballot at home that has, um, the information about voting and...
So if you, um, so the citizen of Port Arthur, Texas, if you're watching, if you've got to watch this show, or you will watch it, remember, let's have some patience. But we've got to vote. It's going to take a little patience, but we got to vote. And we're going to, you know, you're going to have one line to vote for. Okay, that's somebody else in the background. Okay. And then they have another line for, um, um, for local. Please vote. Please vote. And I've got, you have my support, Ms. Holmes. And all the people to Port Arthur understand that it's time for a change. It's time to, and it's time for a change. And your points, your talking points was right on point. You've gave some very, very viable ideals that can happen in, in a small scale in Port Arthur. Let's bring on Kenneth Marks. Kenneth Marks is running for District Four. We're going to come back to you, Ms. Holmes. But Kenneth Marks is running for District Four. And let me get his mic on and we can talk to my brother, Kenneth Marks. Hello, Mr. Marks.
Good evening, Mr. Renfro. And good evening, yes.
Yeah. And it's, yeah. Tell us a little bit about your district and what are your plans on, what's your, what are your platform there in District Four?
Well, uh, to begin, the District Four is the largest land area, uh, district in, in Port Arthur right now. Uh, just to give you an example, what, what goes on here as far as, as streets are concerned? Uh, 40% of all the streets of Port Arthur are located in, in District Four. So we've got four districts. If we've got 40%, that means 60% of the streets are divided between the other three districts. Uh, right now, there's a $10 million, uh, bond that, that has been passed that we're going to be dividing that money between the four districts. So, uh, one of, one of the issues that I will be, uh, looking at very closely going in is, how is that? How is the, uh, the monies for streets going to be divided? If we've got 40% of the streets, logically speaking, we should get 40% of the money to repair and replace those streets. But, uh, we'll talk about that later. Uh, just to give the listeners a little bit of, uh, biography, uh, the earning raise here in Port Arthur.
I was going to, I was going to get to that. I was going to get to that part, but hey, you right on time. Go ahead.
So if you want me to go, I, I can go through.
No, no, go ahead. We like to know where you, where you come from.
1970 graduate of Lincoln High School, bumblebee through and through for life. Uh, 1977 graduate of Lamar University. I'm not sure I'm, I'm... Okay, my wife is giving me some instructions. You know how that goes. She said I should do something here. Okay, is that better?
You were better where you were.
I thought I was, but...
There we go. There we go. You tell, you tell my little cousin, I said.
That's your cousin.
Yeah, let her tell it. We're doing this. She would throw up a boot. But tell, tell the public, uh, about, about yourself, where you come from. You know, you're a 70 graduate of, of, of Lincoln, the bumblebee from the Beehive. And you have graduated from Lamar University in 77. We all attended school together. But Kenneth, tell us, uh, your background there, your personal bio there.
Okay. Military veteran, uh, honorably discharged from the Army in 1974. Again, graduated from, uh, Lamar in 1977 using the GI Bill to finance my education. Uh, upon leaving, uh, graduating from Lamar, entered the workplace, worked in petrochemical industry for 30-plus years uh, at several of the, uh, companies in this area, uh, also in Houston and, uh, the Woodlands. Uh, retired in 2014. The area of specialty is procurement. Been a public servant. I've been involved in, in the city of Port Arthur since, uh, my children were in school, beginning with PTA, band booster, that, that type thing where, where you actually take part in trying to, uh, enhance the quality, quality of life, not only for your children, but for their, their, their peers and for the entire city of Port Arthur. Uh, been a school board member, uh, six years, 2006 to 2012. Served as President of the School Board for two years. Uh, again, stepping down in 2012. Been working with the EDC for the past four years. I stepped down whenever I, uh, filed to run for City Council. And so, uh, I've got, uh, experience again, working within the city, uh, worked on the bond, uh, the initial bond, 2004 Bond Committee for, uh, the passage of monies for our new schools, uh, with PAISD. During that time, we've replaced, uh, or renovated all 17 campuses. We've got all new facilities. We do have, uh, some, some issues that we have to work on, but that, that's the school board and the community that have to work those, those issues out. Basically, uh, I'm married, two children, one grandchild and one grandchild on the way. So, uh, I'm proud grandfather right now. But, uh, let's talk about my platform, which is why we're here tonight. I have a very simple, uh, three-point platform. Uh, first item on the platform is infrastructure improvement. As Ms. Holmes alluded to earlier, one of the major issues in our cities is, is replacement or repair of the streets here in Port Arthur. There is ten million dollars that have been set aside to, uh, repair streets and it's going to be divided between the four districts. Uh, hopefully, uh, it's, uh, divided in, in a manner in which will actually take care of the percentage of streets in each district. Again, District Four has forty percent of the streets here in the city of Port Arthur. So in my mind, the fair thing to do would, would, would be to allocate forty percent of the, uh, street repair money to District Four. We also have, uh, drainage district problems with, uh, drainage problems here, uh, as part of infrastructure. Uh, old piping, uh, are constantly, uh, bursting and having, uh, major leaks. Uh, we do have a situation now where there's a large number of complaints concerning, uh, water bills, uh, not, uh, matching up with usage and what's actually being built to our customers. That's something that we definitely have to look at and, and, and get taken care of. The city is actually in, in the midst of, uh, repairing and replacing street lights, which enhances the, uh, the safety factors in our neighborhoods, uh, yeah, the, the brighter your, your streets are, the, the more, in my mind, safer neighborhoods can be. So we will continue to look at replacing street lights. Revitalization is the second point of my platform. And right now, having come from the EDC, uh, there's a, uh, a plan that was commissioned back, I want to think in two thousand, uh, tw- twelve, two thousand thirteen, uh, with freezing nickels to, uh, to put together a revitalization plan for downtown Port Arthur. In the meantime, what's happened is, is that Motiva, uh, the, the largest, uh, plant, uh, largest refinery, production capacity wise here in the United States, has decided to, uh, to do some work in downtown, purchase some buildings and they're going to be moving upwards of five hundred employees downtown. Uh, with that, uh, we're going to have to actually, uh, demolish some buildings, revitalize or renovate some other buildings, but this is all going to be done with private monies and, and, in conjunction with monies from the EDC. The EDC and the city of Port Arthur right now are, are all, are, are working to, uh, to renovate and, and, uh, uh, repair some buildings, uh, for, uh, general usage, for public usage. We need to continue those programs, but we also need to actually, uh, work with, uh, the citizens of each district, uh, being that I would be a representative for District Four. Define, I would ask my constituents personally in town hall meetings, uh, what are their concerns and, and what is their vision for what's happening in Port Arthur? And what, or where do they want to see us go five years from now? Where, where should we be ten years from now? Twenty years from now? We have to have vision as to how we're going to rebuild and, and, uh, rebuild the city and enhance the quality of life for our citizens here.
I have a question. So with, is that already inked in with the, uh, Motiva? It was, did you say Motiva's moving into downtown? Have you guys put a plan in place to, let's say, uh, convenience stores or, or restaurants or different things to kind of accommodate the influx of folks that are going to be downtown? Because I've been to downtown Port Arthur and I'm just wondering, are there other businesses that are going to, uh, accommodate that downtown revitalization? Or is it kind of just a Motiva thing that's happening? Or, or there are other businesses that are going to, uh, you know, meet the challenge that's going to be needed to kind of accommodate those people that are going to be downtown now?
Right now, it's, it's, it's basically a Motiva thing as far as revitalization. Along with EDC, there, there are a couple of buildings that are being, uh, renovated by the, uh, EDC with grant monies. Uh, the old Port Arthur News Building is being, uh, reconstructed and rebuilt, uh, to house, uh, some facilities that will, uh, help, uh, with job training. I think there's going to be in a, uh, uh, an office area that, that contains, uh, training facilities along with, uh, I think, uh, there's going to be culinary, uh, issues, uh, not issues, but culinary, uh, classes that, that will be set up in a conjunction with, I think with Lamar State College, Port Arthur. But to answer your cut question directly, uh, Motiva is, is the, the main driving force down there right now. They, they've purchased, uh, several buildings. They're actually in, in process of renovating two, two buildings that will house, uh, approximately five hundred plus employees. There is no, uh, solid plan for restaurants or other businesses that, that would be, uh, uh, financed by private investors or, or public monies. But there, again, there's a plan and, and the city and the EDC are working directly with, with Motiva right now. Uh, there's going to have to be some additional planning done. There's going to have to be some additional in, investors brought in and we have to, uh, enhance the plan that's already in place to, uh, attract other investors into, into downtown. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Did it, did it, did it? Okay.
I just kind of wanted to know when you said five hundred plus employees, I'm thinking those people are going to have lunch breaks, those people are going to. People are going to need someplace to go after work perhaps, or maybe they're working long hours and just need a break or, you know, are you guys going to have some sort of accommodation with the city in conjunction with perhaps those entrepreneurs that Ms. Ingram was, where they can kind of come in and capitalize on that downtown business that's now about to be, you know, refurbished?
Right. And, and, and coming from the EDC and working along with, with Mrs. Holmes, uh, those, uh, issues and questions have come up and discussions at the EDC with city, uh, management of what will we do to actually bring in, uh, outside investors to establish the restaurants and the, like the cleaning services or, or whatever else is, is going to be needed down there to accommodate five hundred plus people down there. Uh, there will be, as I understand it, there, there's some work to be done on building, bringing some apartments down there for, for folks to actually, uh, uh, be able to live close to work. Those things are actually in con- conversation right now, but again, it, it, we're in the early stages of that. But as a, coming from the EDC and running for District Four, there, there's a possibility that there may be six brand new council members uh, with, with the mayor who's been there for, think he's in his first year, going into his second year. So there's going to be a lot that we have to do to bring ourselves up to speed, to, to see where the, the city manager and his staff are wanting to, to, to bring the city as far as the revitalization of downtown is concerned. But that's just one issue. There, there, there are myriad of issues that have to be addressed and coming in just, uh, from, from where we're coming from, we're going to have to do a lot of homework. We're going to have to do a lot of study. There's going to have to be a lot of communication with our, uh, district, uh.
I, I kind of would ask, um, each of you, I guess, when this is over, maybe just make a little note, Tony. Uh, somebody, you guys make a little note. What are you prepared to do? If there are six new council members and you guys are going to have to, like you say, you're going to be working on the fly to kind of catch up to speed. You're going to all have a learning curve. You're going to all come in with new procedures to make sure that this transition is both productive and, you know, uh, reliable for the constituents because everybody's going to be, uh, promising something different. You know, how are you guys, what is your level of, I guess, per se, give and take to be working across the aisle? To, you know, compromise with maybe your six fellow new, brand new council members who are all coming in on high gear with new ideas and, you know, new things that they want to see happening. How, how is that going to work?
Well, the first thing, it, the way it's going to work, the first thing I would say is that we have to understand what the form of government that we have. We have a city manager, mayoral type of government. The city manager is actually the CEO of the city. He actually runs the city, okay? We're the policymakers. We're the people that bring the ideas and, and we approve what the city manager brings to us and he and his staff. What we have to come in with, if there are, even if there are, there are only three new members and the incumbents win. What we have to do is we have to come in with the spirit of cooperation. We got a spirit of collaboration, knowing that I'm only one vote. I can bring my, my ideas, but I, I need to listen to what everybody else has to say. And then we have to come together and find out where is the common ground? Once we can get to the common ground and find out what issues are, are we going to prioritize a- as number one, number two, number three, number four, agree on that, put those priorities in place and struck our city manager to handle what he's supposed to handle based on, on, on what we've approved and then hold the city manager accountable for getting those things done. That's what we have to do, uh, coming in. And this is strictly me talking from the experience that, that, that I have in, in being on the school board, being in, 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 uh, business or in corporate America, working in, 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 in those offices uh, with, with, you know, with a hierarchy and a chain of command. We know what we have to do to get things done. And, and that's, that's what I'm bringing to the table is the spirit of cooperation. With the knowledge that we're going to actually get the information that we need to make sure that we're moving in a path that our constituents want us to move in, you know, so.
Kenneth Marks, Kenneth Marks, District Four, uh, Port Arthur, candidate for city council. Uh, kind of that's, that's some powerful, um, um, uh, uh, information that you have given and you've got the right idea and it's cooperating, it's, how can I say this? It's continuation of what, uh, Mrs. Holmes said earlier because you guys know the facts. What's, what's your problem? It's just getting that, getting it into, i- i- in, into the plan to move forward. And, um, I'm going to ask my good friend, uh, Reverend, Donna Frank, Donna Ray Frank. You, you can't talk tonight, right? I know the cowboys long. You can't talk.
I can talk. I'm fine. I'm fine. I am fine. I'm doing well. I can talk.
Off the screen so you can have your crying.
We played a great game. We played a great game. I'm fine.
I was looking over some things I wanted to ask you and, and I would talk to Mrs. Holmes backstage before we all come on. And, and I was just noticing that the diversity of, uh, uh, Port Arthur and Port Arthur, um, of diversity is Hispanics is forty nine percent, the blacks is forty five percent, Asian nine, between nine and eleven percent, and whites only two percent. How can you guys, um, and I'm, I'm, I'm going to ask you, then I'm going to ask everybody, how can you guys capitalize on that strong, uh, diversity you all have in that city?
Well, our diversity, uh, you know, first of all, let me thank you, Mr. Renfro and Ms. Sherwood for having us on tonight. I thank you so much, uh, Tony. You know, uh, we share the same pastor and shame, love for the same people. So, man, thank you for having us on tonight. I'm glad to be here, uh, with Mrs. Holmes and, uh, with Mr. Marks. But our diversity is our strength in Port Arthur. As I look at Port Arthur and as I look at our city, we have two strengths that I see and those two strengths are our diversity and water. Water is a strength that we have here in Port Arthur. We spend a large proportion of our time running from water here on the coast of Texas, but it is our strength here. Um, Port Arthur, of course, is on, uh, the Gulf Coast. Um, and at the same time, you know, um, we have the opportunity to go fishing, uh, we have the opportunity to, to do that. And so that's a wonderful thing, but we have Pleasure Island as well. And, uh, we have not really utilized, I believe, Port Arthur as we can and as we should. Uh, that's one thing. Uh, with all of the water that we have, um, why can't Port Arthur have a river walk? Uh, as San Antonio has. My, my whole idea about Port Arthur is seeing as, seeing Port Arthur uh, as it has never been seen before and to ask the questions, why not? Why can't Port Arthur have, uh, along the lines of Akima, uh, where in Sabine Pass or, or somewhere where we have a boardwalk where individuals can come and enjoy the water and run water through. Uh, we had a big thing. I, I like thinking outside the box and I like to ask questions about why not? Uh, I'm, I'm, I say that I have vision, um, visionary, seeing things differently, perhaps as others would see. But one of the things that we did, we were, many were quite upset because, uh, ultimately, uh, the Mardi Gras left, uh, and now, you know, that does, that doesn't happen here in Port Arthur. But why couldn't water run down Proctor, uh, and ultimately have a river walk running by what Motiva has vision? Motiva has vision and I am elated and excited about Motiva's vision. But always understand, uh, Mr. Renfro, Ms. Sherwood, when people have a vision, that vision does not use, it does not always extend for everyone. It is their vision. And so what we have to have in Port Arthur is our own vision. Why not have Sundays on the seawall where we utilize the seawall and we let vendors, uh, up on the seawall and we crowd the Sundays out in the afternoon, uh, during the summertime? And, or why don't we have, uh, you know, bands in the park, uh, there by the seawall? There are so many things that we can do, but we've got to think outside of the box. Why not have a water park? What prohibits us from having a water park on, on Pleasure Island? Those are all things that can happen and transpire. Uh, as you talked, Tony, uh, Mr. Renfro, you were talking about our diversity. Many people don't know that the larger, uh, population of Port Arthur now is Hispanic and then blacks come in and then, uh, we have, um, our Asian population and there are some, you know, uh, Caucasians, whites who are still here in Port Arthur and, and we're a melting pot. We're, we're, we're a melting pot. That is an advantage. That is not a disadvantage because we look like the world. That is where the world is. And so you can raise your children in Port Arthur around different groups, around different individuals because we look like the world. And so we capitalize on our strengths when we do that. And so we can begin to have cultural festivals. We love to celebrate. If you have never been to a class reunion in Port Arthur, you don't know what a celebration is all about. We love to celebrate in Port Arthur, but we got to capitalize on those strengths. Take those opportunities to have, we used to have the, the, um, the Bro, uh, uh, Jazz Festival. We need to bring those kinds of things back because it falls under the goal that I believe all of us have espoused and that is to provide an environment for the people of Port Arthur where families want to be raised here in Port Arthur, where you want to raise a family. You can come get a good job. You can come and educate your child. You can come and have some recreational interests as well. So that's what we want to do.
That is, man, you, you know, I always thought that, uh, I know.
That is, man, you know, I always thought that uh I know Ms. Sherwood would like to add into that. But I always thought that that uh the Pleasure Island was a gold mine. I mean, the ideals and the vision out that I see for gold isn't, like you said, another kima. Uh another water park, uh uh it it's it's prime for for development. And um that's just my thinking, but you guys are in Port Arthur and you know that you guys have a have 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 strength. And again, what you're saying, the water, and we know you have the good infrastructure inland there and.
I just feel like on the outside looking in, of course, I've been born and raised in Beaumont. But I spent a good portion of my time in Port Arthur. I have a bunch of family members that come out of Port Arthur, NFLers and NBAers that I'm sent to and things of that nature. And I always felt like coming to Port Arthur, there was so much beauty, like you say, in the water. But instead of just being known for what we're known for in the Golden Triangle, which is petrochemical industries. Like we could be known for something else, like festivals and different things like you suggested, like jazz on the lake and the water. Make it something that people come from around the world to come and get involved in. Like you say, we party like nobody else parties, let me tell you. So I'm super excited about that, um and I'm looking forward to the revitalization of Port Arthur. Um when I was getting my master's degree in uh public administration, which would allow me to run for city manager and things of that nature, I applied for the city manager's job. Of course, I was much younger then, but I wanted so much for Port Arthur that I'm super excited to be sitting here with these candidates who, you know, I think will embrace something that's gonna make Port Arthur bigger and better and more beautiful and more, you know, something that the world can aspire to, like you say, with those demographics, Port Arthur can set the stage for diversity. And where the world is heading, which is huge, because how many cities have so much Hispanic and black population and Asian? Where what we're going to find in the future going forward is that Caucasians are gonna be the minority. So Port Arthur is actually at the center of the world stage in terms of diversity. And what's probably gonna happen in five or ten years from now, so we can be on the pioneer front of legislation. For, you know, whether it's casinos or river walls or board walls or even for me, legalizing marijuana and just different things that are gonna generate income. It's gonna make Port Arthur on the pioneer front for legislation for all sorts of things.
Yes, yes. Oh, no, 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 I was just, I was just uh simply nodding my head and agreeing, uh you know, on that front. Uh that uh we have to ask ourselves those questions, why can't those things uh be possibilities? Why can't those things happen? They are not simply pie in the sky, but ideas have to begin uh somewhere. I was grateful to hear Mr. Marx say, and of course, uh I have known uh Ingrid West Holmes for a very long time. And I know them, uh worked with them, school board, worked them in other different areas as well. And so I'm 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 eager to hear and uh glad to hear uh as well that they talked about cooperation. That they talked about working together and Ms. Sherwood, it is important and imperative to understand. It's going to be about collaboration, but it's going to be about consensus. It's going to be about talking to each other and understanding. And as we try to talk about those things, I don't want us just to look at what I have said and what all of us has said. We've got to understand that these things can happen, they can be a reality as we come together with vision. As we do, as Mr. Marx said, understand that the city manager uh is the CEO. But also understand that councilman as well can bring those things to the table. And don't miss this, but the community as well. So we have stakeholders, we have business leaders, we have individuals who must come together with collaboration and consensus to come together. We've had some plans that have happened and transpired that have had, uh we've done plans. Uh we've done uh bought and paid for plans that have, that we need to blow the dust off of and and revisit. Or begin again by strategic planning, by doing that, ultimately coming together. We've done those studies, but if we need to start again and start over because we've got different people and and a different city. Start by strategic planning, putting those things together, we've gotta change the mindset. We've gotta change the perspective uh ultimately of people in our city. Uh and as well, the perspective of people who look at us and let us know, let everyone know that Port Arthur has a mindset where we're going to conduct business, where we're going to ultimately make sound business decisions. Uh and then in, when we do that, we understand that individuals will support, they'll buy into the change and the things that we ultimately wanna do. Uh and as well, uh if I just have a couple more minutes as well to share, that we do that through strategic planning. But as well, we look at the budget and we go in and look at the budget, those monies that we have. Bonds are gonna be important because the bonds have been important uh when you start talking about a renewal and a resurgence. So we gotta look at the bonds uh ultimately and in our budgets as well, we look at that. Always understanding that we take care of our employees as well, because if we take care of employees, we understand um that uh, you know, they will take care of us. People don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. And so we can, you know, ask for that excellence when we take care of our employees. And so we can put forth that plan and present a plan of excellence to everyone as we go for, as we look forward, as we look at our budget. And of course, Mr. Marx has alluded to infrastructure, you know, alleviating the implication of our storms that happen. Making sure we have drainage, making sure that we, you know, we keep trash cleared and our underground piping. All of those things, streets is a major issue, whether we're talking about sidewalks, gutters, ditches, lights, all of those things. Uh one of the things we did in the city was, we put curbs, but we don't have sidewalks. We need to make sure that we can put sidewalks uh in our area and then. I'm sorry. No, no, and just, I could go on, but uh understand that we gotta look at equipment as well. Because we talk about trash, but we've gotta look at buy lease agreements. How we can ultimately make sure that our equipment uh is always available uh so that we won't get behind on trash pickups and and those kinds of things. And so there are just a plethora of things that we can look at.
I have something that I'd like to, you know, direct to each of you as a young entrepreneur and a young parent and a mother. What do you guys anticipate doing to revitalize the young people in Port Arthur? And the young, you know, people that are starting families and starting careers and education is important. And not only is education important, but careers are important. How are you guys planning on incorporating the young people and making sure that they're prepared for these petrochemical jobs? And what do you guys plan on doing to make sure that careers aren't leaving Port Arthur? And even if young people do get prepared, that they wanna stay and work and live and be a part of the Port Arthur community? And, you know, take their money, their time, their effort and their energy. I mean, I'm a young entrepreneur and mother, sometimes we feel a disconnect from the people that they're positions of power. That they don't see us and they don't value us. Young people, what what is the reach out and the bargaining for keeping and, you know, recruiting young entrepreneurs or career minded people or people that wanna start a family to come into Port Arthur and stay in Port Arthur and want to be a part of what's happening in Port Arthur? You know, and education as far as to maintain those careers in Port Arthur. Or or even putting a restriction on refineries to make sure that a certain percentage of jobs are maintained or 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 set off on a side specifically for Port Arthur. For people that are specifically from live in and by Port Arthur.
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead, if I might, go ahead, Ingrid, go ahead.
I just, I think what we have to do is create an environment, but first of all, most of you wanna live here. You're an educated young woman who brings a lot to the table and you need to be invited to the table. You need to be sitting down with us, making sure, and not you, but all of the other young people in our community. You know, I've often heard people say that, oh, well, we are, yes, young people in Port Arthur, Texas are educated and well educated. And we need to have them at the table, we need to listen to their thoughts and their ideas and what they think Port Arthur needs to do. When you talk about education and making sure that they are employed at the refineries. One of the things in talking to people about the refineries, people don't, you know, as well educated as we are, sometimes we don't have the best interviewing skills. Teach people how to interview, share with them, you know, you can have a doctoral degree and not know how to interview for a specific job. We need to do that and we need to share that kind of information with young people. You have a lot to offer me and I have something to offer you. And we need to all sit down at the table together, talk about that and make that happen. But beyond that, I, we need to find a way to keep you here. I don't want you going to Houston to a jazz concert all the time. I want you to have your own ass club right here in Port Arthur, Texas. Twenty, thirty people come to that jazz club, but that makes it that you'll be here and your friends will be here. And your friends from Houston will be visiting you. We have the best resources in Texas, we need to capitalize on them. I need to hear, we need to hear the the voices of the thirty year olds. You know, we need to hear their voices, we need to hear what they say. And yes, I have experience in working with government, but I am a visionary. And what I know is, when I was thirty years old, I wanted somebody to listen to me and hear what I thought. That's why I am where I am today. And I wanna sit down at the table with young people and talk about that and get their ideas in Port Arthur.
Absolutely, I agree with you, Mr. Marx. Yes, if if, there goes my phone in the background. Uh yes, what what I wanted to say is, is that looking at this from a pragmatic standpoint, uh there are tools that we already have here that we need to actually put into action. And one of the things that we could do initially is to look at our EDC designation. The EDC right now is 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 designed, the EDC, the Port Arthur EDC is designed to to help industrial type businesses. This, the cities that surround us like the Port Natures, the Oranges, their EDCs actually fund uh businesses that diversify the economy. And but it's it's based on a designation of uh that that's written into your your uh con- your your agreement. It's a, there's an agreement that's written. So we would first, I would want to look at, and we talked about this on on the EDC, Ms. Holmes can attest, is that we should actually look at going to that second designation where you can actually fund, uh help fund restaurants or grocery stores or uh an amusement park or whatever else based on, because it's, all the money is there, is taxpayer money, is sales tax. It's not, you don't have to be a property owner or anything, everybody pays sales tax, everybody. So everybody should benefit from that sales tax revenue. So one of the things that I would bring to to the table or want to bring to the table is let us look at putting this on 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 the ballot in in the form of a proposition to the citizens. Do we want to change that designation? At one time, you weren't able to have both designations, but that has changed. You can have both type designations so you can allocate money into both directions. And that would really enhance the way we can actually attract young people who are entrepreneurial to come in to access capital, to the access monies at a low rate or in 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 a form of grants. So monies that you don't have to pay back. And if you, if if you look at the, at at Port Natures, what they've been doing over there, at Orange, what they've been doing over there, at some of this even Needle and so many other cities all across the state. That's how they're actually uh uh juicing their economic development. It's through that, through the economic development corporations. So that's one thing that we need to look at, is making sure that we take advantage of all the tools that we have in our tool belt. And and they're there, we have to, again, going in, you've got to do your homework. You've got to to find out what's available to us, what can we do? And then, but talk to your your constituents, talk to your fellow council people. And again, come up with with some prioritized uh issues that we want to go forth with. And because everyone here, all the candidates have good intentions, every last one of us. But what we have to do is to be able to bring something to the table that's that's gonna help move everything forward. There's a lot of negativity going on in this campaign right now and 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 we find out that folks uh that most of the people here in Port Arthur are sick and tired, of being sick and tired, of people talking about each other, disparaging each other personally and and just bringing negativity to the table. And then wonder why folks don't wanna come here. So I just, I just wanna throw that out there, that we need to make sure that we come to the table with the spirit of cooperation and collaboration and be willing to work to make sure that all our efforts are made in 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 the direction of enhancing the quality of life in Port Arthur to attract young people like you, Ms. Sherwood.
I have one other question, guys, and I know that I, look, Tony, he, look, you should have, you know, I got a bunch of questions. My background is in public administration, sure, I I I'm I'm a branch of government. So I have one other question for you guys. By by myself being who I am, what can we do for people younger than me? Let's say eighteen to twenty five, while we have a school to prison pipeline. Is there a way for the Port Arthur City Council to partner with PAISD? To get kids prepared to go straight into the refinery or straight into engineering degrees or straight into these jobs? And I'm I'm gonna ask this again, can we force those companies, those shells and Motivas? And uh 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 all of them, Chevron, you name it. Uh can we force them to set aside so many jobs specifically for our Port Arthur people? They cannot be outsourced by anybody else as long as they meet the requirements and standards? Because we need something for the 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 city constituent people to be able to look forward to. Not just them bringing in their people from other places, but specifically for us.
Let me, let me address that for you, Ms. Sherwood, I think that is a fantastic question and I I see your passion. But I I I as well have that same passion. I didn't get into where I, what I've done and where I've been and my my resume. But currently, I'm on the Port Arthur Independent School District School Board. Uh I've served there for twelve years, I had four terms, I've been board president uh for two terms. And I'm vice president right now. So glad to announce that uh our school district on last year graduated sixty of our college, sixty of our graduates graduated with college degrees and diplomas at the same time at our Woodrow Wilson Early College High School. But what many people don't know about Port Arthur, I'm excited about that because we're one of the only school districts in southeast Texas that does that. Uh but what I'm equally excited about is what we do at our career and technical um uh school there. Uh called the Cape Building, uh we have welding, we have machinery, we have uh AutoCAD. Uh we have cosmetology, we have computer, uh we have audio visual where we train our kids. And what I am greatly excited about, we have for the last two years had individuals who graduated from high school uh on on that Thursday and started working uh at Gulf Copper on that Monday. Uh, on, on that Thursday and started working, uh, at Gulf Copper on that Monday. So that is the thing, but now what you bring to the table and what we have to do is? You see, if you're going to have a fire, you've got to have three components. You've got to have heat, you've got to have a fuel source, uh, and you have to have that energy. You have to have those three air, you have to have oxygen. If Port Arthur is going to be what Port Arthur needs to be? We've got to collaborate better with the school district. I don't know why that has not happened. I don't know why that has not transpired to the degree that it needs to. But we have to have a collaboration between the city, the school district and the port. So that ultimately we can cause the jobs. Now, one of the problems that we have is, is that the interface agreements that we have? With, uh, Jefferson County and the commissioners, those agreements? Come together and it is the, it is, it is the language used, uh, in those agreements. And that language says local. Local does not mean Port Arthur in that language. And we've got to talk about having that language changed. We've got to work with the Commissioners Court. My good friend Judge Brannick and, and all, uh, Mr. Senegal and Mr. Alfred. We got to, and all of the others there who are there working and, and doing those jobs. We've got to talk about what does local mean? And how ultimately, we do have people who are qualified for these positions in Port Arthur proper. But the lines are long for people who come in to Port Arthur to work and they take their monies out. And we've got to, uh, we've got to ultimately get to a place, listen, and then I'll be quiet and let someone else. People don't do what you expect, people do what you inspect. And so if you just say, well, you know, you couldn't find anybody local and there's nobody who can pass a test? Whether that's a drug test, I'm just going to be real clear, a drug test or, you know, the test to work in the plant? You know, uh, from an educational standpoint or aptitudinal standpoint? No, we want to see those numbers. We want to ultimately see that, uh, that ultimately you are making that sincere effort? To hire people here in the city of Port Arthur. So it begins by talking, sharing, understanding, working on it. We want collaborations, we want partnerships. That's what we really want, that's what we need in Port Arthur.
And piggybacking on what Pastor Frank said here about the agreements. I've been giving that some thought here the last couple of days. And what, what's crossed my mind is the fact that? We need to define terms more clearly in these in lieu of tax agreements and, and whatever. And if we have definite, uh, milestones, definite, uh? What's the word I'm looking for here? We, we, we want to make sure that, that the, the companies that we have the agreements with? Understand that, okay, you come back and you tell us that you can't? Find anybody from Port Arthur? Then there needs to be language in those, in, in those agreements that say, okay? If you don't hire somebody because you, you didn't find any qualified people? Then you need to put some, be a good neighbor and put some? X amount of dollars into some training programs and everything so that we can? Get folks trained to come to work in these plants at home. But we have to, what Pastor Frank said, people do what you inspect. If you inspect the language in these agreements? And have our legal department make sure that they come up with, with, with the right language? So that they can, the companies can be held accountable for, for not only? Having to, to, to try to employ our, our constituents? But if they can't find what they say are, are, uh, qualified constituents here in Port Arthur? Then they need to do something else and it needs to be spelled out in that agreement. Because if, if you want me to consider you a good neighbor, then you need to act? In a way that shows that you're a good neighbor.
And, and, and with, I have one more thing, Tony, I know you probably like. But with the young people and getting out the vote? Uh, I would like to ask each of you, um, what are you doing to? What are you guys personally doing to get out the young vote? And making the young people feel like this is necessary and important? Or making them realize that this is not just another election? We're not going to just do business as usual or whatever your slogan might be. I mean, maybe I'm putting words in your mouth, but you know, to get the young people energized? Because I feel like so many of the young people that I talk to say, oh, well, I'm not vote because it don't matter. Or, or well, I'm not vote because that's going to change. Oh, well, I'm not vote because it don't directly affect me or? I mean, we have to bridge that gap between the older people who feel like I must vote? And the young people who feel like I ain't worried about it, it just don't matter to me. You know what I mean? What, what are you doing to encourage? Or persuade or whatever the word may be? I mean, to literally get young folks on board, involved and, and energized?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought about a lot, who, who liked it, who liked Pastor Frank was speaking?
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I had your mic, my, my.
Right, right. Man, I think that thing is every day, uh, every day at, uh, three o'clock since the pandemic? Uh, hit, I've been, uh, on Facebook. I, I, I really have been trying to utilize, uh, as all of us have been? Um, the, the whole idea of Facebook, WhatsApp, uh, Twitter, Instagram, TikTok? All of those things, using media. And so I, you know, I've become pretty astute at that, got YouTube channel and all of those things. But I, I, I talk every day at three o'clock, uh, by giving information? Uh, and inspiration is what we call it, uh, frankly speaking. And I do that every day, talking about the issues? Whether it is the Breonna Taylor issue? Whether it is the issue of social justice and where we are in this election? Where we are with the nomination of Supreme Court? Since, um, you know, since, um, uh, the notorious RBG, uh, has passed on, uh, Ruth Bader Ginsburg. So letting them know what the issues is and how it relates to their life. I know that they are discouraged. I know they feel as though they say that it's not going to make a difference or it's not going to change anything. But we have to show them, whether it is by taking them, uh, by the hand? And showing them the correlation. How does it directly affect your life? How it affects you if you go into a courtroom and you had an opportunity to vote for the judge that you go before? Are those things like the district attorney, uh, and how that affects on a local level? Or the sheriff here in Jefferson County? How that affects, how it affects in our, our school board elections? It, it affects you directly and so that's how I'm seeking to do that. And I'm, I'm, I know that's how we all are seeking to do it. We've got a thing, it's just one second, we just, we've got a thing where? We're putting together seven. You go into your phone and you pick the seven people? And you directly charge them and walk with them to make sure that they get to the polls? Those seven get another seven, those seven get another seven. And so we take charge of that and we, you know, and don't just get the people who are in your concentric circle? Just those people in your family or in your house, that's a given. Everybody in your house ought to vote. But those other individuals who you come in, I have sons and I've got daughters? Uh, ultimately who are young folk in their thirties and early forties. And so, you know, man, just getting them energized and fired up because it matters. It really matters.
It, it really do matters. And, um, guys, you, 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 you really, uh, got, all three of you all have a great vision. And that's some area with that we need to improve in, in, even here in Beaumont. And, uh, so Jefferson County has so much opportunity. And, um, so it is so much we have, have work to do. And I really appreciate you guys joining me. I, I, I want to spend more time and get more involved in what's going on in, uh, South Jefferson County, Port Arthur area. And I want to see, uh, success with all three of you all. This is why I invited you to come on to the Mounsey Power Podcast and hope to have you back again. And, uh, let's, let, I want to ask you one other question. I'm, Ms. Sherwood, uh, you, you know, man, I ask a question, would you? Okay, now, uh, Ms. Frank, tell us your, your area or your district, what it contains of, you know? I want to make sure that everybody knows.
I, I am, I am citywide. Everybody, everyone in the entire city of Port Arthur, it is position eight, um, at large. And so just as, uh, I have, you know, run, uh, you voted, I, what I've been saying is? You've trusted me, uh, in a citywide election with your children, our most valued asset. And now I just want to continue that. But the entire city of Port Arthur can vote, uh, for, uh, position eight, Frank, uh, in, in this race.
And, uh, Mr. Marks?
District four, um, my district encompasses, uh? Lakeside, Palomar, Port Lake, Zell Vista, uh? Dominion Ranch, homes off of Golf Hill, parts of the west side. Again, I have the largest land area district in, in the city. So it, I have a, a huge, uh, area to cover. We, and pandemic has prevented, uh, person to person contact like we would normally? Do with the walk in neighborhoods and everything. So yes, I, I've been doing the, uh, Facebook, uh, and, and the social media thing. But, uh, I think we, we, we stand a good chance of, uh, actually winning this thing, but we've got a lot of work to do.
And finally, all, all three of you guys and whoever want to chime in? I want you to explain to your viewers and also when you explain to your viewers? Share this podcast for those who are watching and your friends or neighbors or loved ones? That, uh, share this podcast so that we can get the word out. Uh, within, within, uh, seven days, uh, usually this show usually hits about eight to nine thousand people. We want to get them hit the mark of fifteen thousand people. We want to, to put off the city, put off the people to know who you are? What you represent and what you want to do to support them? In your efforts as city councilman of Port Arthur, Texas. And I want you all, want to give us a matter which one? Explain again that there's going to be two ballots, correct?
Yeah, yes, there, there are going to be two ballots. Um, they're going to be the two ballots, uh, where an individual will go in and vote for the presidential election? Uh, the school board election, uh, all of the other, uh, individuals who will be voting? But the city of Port Arthur is holding their election by themselves. And so they are making themselves completely responsible for that election. So you're going to have to practice again, discipline and patience and all of that. But it's going to be imperative and important that you do vote, uh, in the city election? And in, uh, the, uh, county election, uh, as well? And down ballot. It's important in the, in the other election in the, that you go down ballot and vote, you know, in every race.
Right, well, well, now the judge has rejected the, uh, Texas amendment on the ballot. So now we can, we can vote one, uh, we can vote one time now, all, all.
Oh, straight ticket.
Right, straight ticket. They are, the judge turned it down and rejected it on the Friday night late. So we can.
Wow, didn't know that.
Right, right. And, uh, so, um, hopefully that's not appealed to, but I'm sure it will. But right now, so far as of Saturday morning, we can go straight ticket. Uh, I would visit with, uh, Karen, um, Gidry on it on Monday? And let's, uh, make sure that it's going to, if we have time to do a straight ticket ballot. But also remember people of Port Arthur, you've got two ballots. It is all, all polls, all polls going to have those two ballots. You're going to have a national ballot and a city of Port Arthur ballot. And I'm letting you right now know that you've got in District Eight, it's the Donna Ray Frank. In District One, you have Ms. Ingrid West Holmes. And District Four, you have Kenneth Marks. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. Thank you guys for joining me. And I want to make sure that you get out there, people, and vote? And vote and vote like you've never voted before in your life. We've got to have you to vote. And I want you to vote early. Early voting starts October thirteenth. I want you to vote, bring your lawn chairs, whatever you got to do, be there and we're going to vote. We're going to do early voting, we're going to do early mail-ins, early absentee voting. Everything's going to be done early. We want to have all our votes in by November third.
Yes, we do.
My, my co-host?
Well, everybody knows that I'm always super excited and I'm super excited about this panel. And I'm super excited to come here and tell you that voting is important. Voting matters. Voting changes the trajectory of everything. Just like, uh, Pastor Frank said? The, the judges or people that are elected officials that are going to decide cases? They matter. Not one vote out of a hundred, not one judge out of a hundred and ninety-eight judges that? Has been, uh, appointed since Donald Trump has been elected, has been African American. That is a problem. And if we don't vote, if we don't see a problem with that, then we have a problem. Everybody must vote, I'm super excited. Thank you guys for coming and we're going to vote like our life is.
And also, um, join us on Tuesday, uh, after the presidential debate. We're going to have a live, uh, podcast after the debate and we're going to talk about the debate. So y'all join us on Tuesday evening after the debate, debate after the debate. And I'll have some special guests and also those who also join us on Tuesday night after the, the presidential debate? I will post up our link, our Mounsey Power Podcast link on the comment page so that you can join us if you'd like to join us at any time. Uh, and also on Thursday, we have First Thursday and that's when we have our power meeting, our roundtable talk. And we have, um, several guests that we do on Thursday. And on Sunday, we're going to have Ms. Yvonne Pollitt, who is running for Constable One? A precinct one for Jefferson County Constable. Uh, she's going to join us on, uh, Sunday, uh, at seven o'clock. So again, people, we are just here to educate the African American community. Educate them about us, educate about our candidate, educate them about voting, educate about health, business, leadership. We're here, uh, to be a blessing to others. So I want to thank you guys again one more time and hope you good luck and blessings? In your, uh, uh, election and, uh, we'll see you again next time. And entertain you, and entertain you on users platform, you know how to reach me. You, it's, it's yours, okay? Thank you so much. We have peace.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Be safe.
Thank you so much.
All right, yeah, all right, thank you, all right.